Okay, thank you. We'll bring the meeting to order here on Wednesday, June 19. We're here meeting on a Wednesday because we have tax day here and we were not here on Tuesday. We have a very short abbreviated agenda for this evening. There have been a number of cancellations and with the items withdrawn from the agenda, so if anyone's here for the SING application, that's been, well, it's not going to be on tonight. It'll be on for...
July 16.
July 16. So if you're here for that, sorry. Also, I don't think anyone's here for the Monaco resolution, but that's been pulled off the agenda as well. So, the SING matter will be heard on July 16, next time we have it before us. So, the first item and only item from an applicant this evening is that of Katz. This is an application for a site development plan for an accessory apartment, approval 275 Croton Dam Road.
My name is Tapani Talaw. Sorry, Tapani Talaw. And I have been on and off for this project, and I was announced yesterday that I should be here. So, I am in a little bit of a bind, but I would explain what I did at the time, and then I'll hopefully have some questions that we could discuss. What we are doing simply is reducing the number of bedrooms in order to get the septic. And yet, as we can see from here, we have just a COH who requires an extra 25 percent. And that is a very difficult issue.
This is originally a single-family home, and now they want to make it a two-family home? Is that the...
Originally, it was originally two, first, we understand.
So it always had two kitchens?
That is the conversation that is...
No.
No?
No.
This was always just a single-family...
It was an old house.
How about a little background on this?
That I don't know, because I'm not...
Well, who does? Anybody here?
Yes.
Thank you.
Come up and introduce yourself.
Okay, I'm Cheryl Katz, Michael Katz's mother, and that's his brother.
Hi, I'm Daniel Katz.
He's in California. The original was a two-family... Can you please speak into the microphone?
Better at the microphone than... Sorry.
The original house that Michael bought was a two-family, and the second part was attached, sort of. Yeah, those are the drawings. And, sorry, it's not on the stick. But it was all gotten from your records, from the town. This was the original picture, and what happened was when they designed to make it a two-floor, they combined the two into one building. And...
Trying to see if they have the kitchen number here.
And it's always been listed for tax purposes as a two-family, and...
I think it's important for the board to be aware of whether or not the building department records are not connected to the tax records.
They have two kitchens.
They are separate, so it may be taxed as a two-family, but if the building records show that it is a single-family, then as far as the building permits and whatnot, they relate to what is actually built versus an assessment.
So, does that mean that the two-family home is out of compliance with respect to, or must be with respect to, the building department?
I would think regardless of what we think here, the county, and I think maybe Tom can speak on it, we always require, and although the building inspector does, requires, and no objection from the county, and they make a determination if it has two kitchens in there, and it has, how many bedrooms are you going to have now, two or three?
No, no. It has one kitchen now, in the main part, and we got a C of O, and everything was checked by the building department. And what we wanted was, we finished the basement, and we wanted to make that the accessory apartment by, there's a sink down there for a bar or whatever, but by making the second kitchen. And it's only allowed three bedrooms.
And that's what we do.
And the main part has three bedrooms, but we're going to combine two of them to make one bedroom out of it, so that we can use the third bedroom for the accessory apartment.
And that brings you under the, for the septic.
Correct.
Got it.
But the additional kitchen, they trigger a county health department thing.
I would still say let the county make the final determination, and I think the building inspector, I don't want to speak for Thomas, but...
I do agree.
They would have a no objection, he would require a no objection from the county, so they realize it, and if they feel and agree with your assessment, that it had two kitchens and the three bedrooms, and everything's equal, an apples to apples, they would have no problem stamping no objection to it. So it covers the building department and the town.
Yep, and here we have two original kitchens.
It originally had two.
I'm in no position to argue that.
Yeah, we, yeah. Yeah, we don't do that.
Right.
So that's why I put it on my note, just to bring it to everyone's attention.
Yeah, but I think it's important for the board's information, they're taking what is currently a three-bedroom, single-family house, creating a two-bedroom, single-family house with a one-bedroom accessory apartment in the basement area of the house.
Thank you.
Gotcha.
And that's, and we have three parking spaces.
Are there any issues with regard to the basement in terms of egress and...
Whatever, those issues will be resolved when they make a building permit. They will be required to demonstrate access and egress according to building standards.
Okay.
So that's not something that we would deal with on this level.
So, I'm looking at this drawing here.
There are drawings, Mr. Tapani, there are, if you scroll up, all of your drawings are on there so that they can be shown for the public.
This is the second floor I'm showing here, that where we're going to close up on the bedroom, open up one wall, and so the two bedrooms become...
So, just by opening that wall and declaring it one bedroom, even though it hardly looks like a, like one bedroom, I mean, you could, one could very quickly just turn that into a third bedroom again. I guess that there's not much the building department can, or we can, sort of, do with that. We might be skeptical, but there's not much we could do about that.
Well, again, the building inspector makes that determination when he reviews it, and he believes that it could be or is another bedroom, he could say that.
Even though it's, or is, but he could say it could be, and then reject the...
Yeah, well, yeah.
Because of authority.
And I think it's important to note that the applicant did sit with the building inspector and review the plans, and the changes that are being represented are somewhat representative of the discussion that the building inspector had had with the applicant. There are some indications in these plans that were not what was discussed with the building inspector, which I called out in my memorandum.
Right, there's French doors that should not be there. This was a client's request.
Right, I remember seeing that.
I had to get it out, and then he went to put it back in.
That's where we moved. That's an office.
Is there a family need here that's driving the accessory apartment?
Extreme.
Okay.
Yes.
So it's a matter of convenience and care?
There's some mortgage on it that's way higher.
Yeah, I like to, because I'm a settler and outside, I came in the middle to do this.
Could I understand what your role is in this application?
I came to do the basement renovation.
You builded?
Architect.
Architect, okay.
And so I did that, and so I've been kind of pulled in.
I was just confused, I just wanted to get the...
But I found out the fact that the original contractor just nicely demolished the original house and created that budgetary issue with a redesign and much more expensive house.
Supposed to be a renovation, and it became a new permit for a new house.
And so...
With all codes, new codes, sprinkler systems, et cetera.
So they have a time limit to meet budget at the moment.
So the additional space will be used to help supplement the additional costs and provide additional income?
Yes, and there's a great need for that low-income space. We've been asked by many people already, when, when can we?
Okay.
I don't know if I must add to it, except the septic in the conversation with Mike is a difficult procedure, because we are so close to the wetland and the ponds, and the only way that we can do it is to buy land from the neighbor. He feels that is possible, but it's not going to be too big or too much property for this process.
Right. That seems to me an acquisition of additional property might be in contradiction to the, what you're trying to do here also in terms of...
So, if you did want to recapture that third bedroom down the way, I mean, you don't have, there's no time right now, you just need to, but if you did want to recapture it, and that option to buy the adjacent land was still open to you, then you could improve the septic and reinstall the bedroom.
That is what he's hoping, but Mike is, yes, so...
Just be more time to get that done.
And just to make you aware, that in the instance that you are looking to purchase neighboring land to, you know, reestablish the three-bedroom, single-family home, that that would also require a lot line adjustment with this board. Okay, so there's an additional process.
It's a whole process.
Yes.
And that's why it's a year-long process.
Which property would that be? Would that be the Cucci or the...
On the left.
As you face the road, on the left?
Yep.
No, as you face the house.
As you face the house.
As you face the house.
So the west.
Yep. The property on the right is very...
Because that's where you're very constrained, anyway, your property lines are constrained here.
There's a pond.
I see. Okay.
Pond's on the right, the property on the left. And first here, the septic company has given us all the data that the usage is basically the same and has been.
Okay. I think, Sabrina, you had some comments and...
I did. So, the applicant has submitted plans which demonstrate improvements to the basement level to create the apartment. There's some concerns because they don't identify the access point to the accessory apartment. There is a door leading from the apartment parking area through the existing garage into a bathroom on the plans, and there's a door leading into a hallway which includes a door for a mechanical room and another door leading into the bedroom of the proposed accessory apartment. So when I actually took the plans and spoke with the building inspector, he told me that there was actually a door, the main door, was going to be underneath the...
In the backyard.
There is a patio or a sliding glass door.
Carport.
Yeah, underneath the carport, there is a sliding glass door which would be used as the main entrance, but that's not what the plans say, so that change needs to be made, so they mirror the discussions that you had with the building inspector.
That was not aware of that.
Is the garage used by the resident upstairs? Or is the garage used by the resident downstairs?
Upstairs.
Upstairs.
The carport would be for the resident downstairs.
Right, and so the question is, are you closing those doors that lead from the garage to the basement?
To the bathroom?
Or from the basement to the apartment? You know, we need clear depiction on the plans.
That can't be closed, because it's a code.
Okay, however it is, we need clear depiction on the plans.
The back door, the slider, is the main door, the main entrance. When we discussed the secondary egress, barrier code or whatever, it was the one through the bathroom to the garage to the backyard. The door to the hallway to upstairs would be locked. I mean, that would be not in use.
Are you actually allowed to go through a garage?
Yes.
We checked on that, and we were told yes.
Okay.
It's a secondary egress, right?
We also looked at a window of making a second egress, and we were told we didn't need to do that.
You go through the garage, okay. Tom?
The state says there's enough light in the front.
The Merck State Code allows for an egress through a garage if there is an egress door or escape window established in the garage. You're not allowed to use the overhead doors to egress, but there is a second door in that garage, which we have a technical bulletin which allows that to be effective.
Is there travel dist, I mean, I know we're getting into the weeds, and this isn't for us, but is there travel distance okay with that door going to the bathroom?
In residential situations, the travel distance doesn't apply, it's a commercial situation. And they do have the ability of going into the hallway, the common hallway, and going up out of another staircase.
The one in the back?
Yes. Yeah, so we've actually afforded multiple egresses.
Okay. Well, that door will be locked, though, you just said, so it wouldn't really provide egress for the basement apartment if the door to the common hallway is kept locked. So it would have to be through the bathroom to the garage.
The building department's going to require that that door stay operable.
Yes. Well, operable and unlocked, or the ability to unlock it from the inside?
Ability to unlock from the inside of panic hardware or some device that will allow it to enter that area.
Yeah, I just think for the planning board's application, the applicant needs to really refine these plans and provide you indications of what is, what is existing access that will be changed, what is new access for the apartment, just really make it clear from the plans, because had Tom not been in his office when I walked over with the plans and said, "How are they getting out of here? How are they getting in here?", I would have had that information. So you certainly don't have what you need to process this application right now.
I had the same problem with it, so.
Thank you. I was not brought this to my attention, so I was not able to...
So if I can, the plans do identify three parking spaces, two within the existing garage and one located underneath the existing deck. Again, providing ingress and egress drives from the parking spaces, just so we know that there's appropriate access individually out into the driveway, turning radius, so on and so forth. On the first floor of the house, there's, it calls for installation of French doors on the plan. They're labeled as an office. Again, talking with the building inspector, those doors would be to removed so that they cannot be closed as far as an office, looks like a bedroom.
It's already been totally removed.
But on the plans that you have submitted, that it has not been removed.
It should be updated.
Correct, they need to be updated. Changes indicated on the second floor are consistent with the work that was required by the building inspector to reduce the number of bedrooms from three to two. There should be a plan and a narrative regarding the septic system. The plan that was submitted didn't identify that box as the septic system. You should identify that.
Yeah, I was not involved.
I understand that. Again, I am just reciting the information that the board received, and it's inadequacy to create a record of what it is you want to do. The, there's no new development proposed as part of this application, it's just alteration of existing structures. It is considered a type-two action in accordance with the plan.
What about the FAR, since they're going to, is it an eight-foot ceiling or higher in the basement?
Yes.
How high, nine?
Eight.
Eight.
Yeah.
What's the...
The FAR did not change.
The FAR didn't, even though...
Correct.
Occupy the basement because it's only eight feet?
It was a finished basement previous.
Previously, oh, so someone's grandparents are in the house, so that's good.
Okay. Bob, you have some comments?
Yes, basically, one was in line with Sabrina's, they should submit a complete set of plans, showing the first floor plan, second floor plan. The plans I looked at were like crap, but I couldn't see who the preparer was, there was no date. They should be fully stamped, signed, and sealed by the preparer, architect, of course. Total square footage of the proposed accessory apartment, that's 1A, B, and C, that's critical. Number two, the site plan should show certain items, which I outlined. We discussed the septic already, it's critical, they show that and bring it up to the county. If they feel it originally had two kitchens, I'd tell them not to be doing that now, they would have no probable objection, if that's their determination. And that would be required. Now, you don't have town order there, so there's got to be a well for probable law. I would highly recommend showing that, because minimum separation distances by the county that need to be followed, so that should be shown on the plan as well. Do you have any idea where the well is? The wellhead?
Yeah, it's on the left. Septic on the right.
And when you bring that up to the county, make sure they know and aware of that.
By the way, the, there was some drawings with the A, B, and C, but somehow they...
Well, if you knew where it is, you could take field measurements, so.
I gave it.
Yeah.
I know they kind of showed where the parking space was under the deck, but they should show that, show the direction, and I'm also a little more concerned about the turning movements, to make sure when the person that moves into this place can turn out and come out face forward on the roadway. Secondly, D, it's always standard, anytime there's an increase in use for a driveway, that the sidelines have to be improved to some extent. So if there's any type of blockage of the sidelines now, they should be turned back to get better, or at least improve the site distances coming out to the street.
No buckets. No buckets.
Excuse me? As far as vegetation?
No.
Okay.
But it has to be delineated, so we...
Should be delineated and shown on the plan as well.
And Bob, do we know if the site has two curb cuts or one?
It looks like two curb cuts, yeah.
Can you go back to your survey, so they can look at it?
There are two curb cuts here.
The drawings we have show two curb cuts, but I don't know if they're up to there.
You know, I did some research on that, and I couldn't make any, it was inconclusively.
Well, the survey is...
It's a...
A front.
What do you call it?
Two curb cuts.
Two curb cuts.
I can't make a reasonable assertion of when that was put in.
So maybe a pre-existing notch informing?
I would have to say it was pre-existing.
It was pre-existing.
It's important to speak into the microphone, please, babe.
I went on GIS, you go back to like 1947, and based on what I can determine, it's inconclusive, so I would say in this particular case, in my opinion, it's probably pre-existing.
And, but, so...
There are two entrances to the property. There are two entrances to the property from Route 134, making a U shape so that you're always facing forward no matter what. So even if you packed up from the bottom, you would still be going forward to get out on the main street.
I don't understand. So, if, I guess I don't understand the function of this loop here, because if you're coming from here, this is the, this should be the preferred way, because it's more perpendicular to the right-of-way. If you're, if you're here, you're, I'm sorry, can I, yes, if you're doing this, you're looking over your left shoulder to see if any traffic is coming. I'm not sure that that's...
At a tough angle.
It's difficult to see without being on the site, but that is the natural...
Can you just speak into the microphone?
Yes, and it's a difficult...
I'm sorry.
Sorry. The way the grade works is that the natural way is the way she presented it, and it's very difficult to explain without being on the site.
When you say the way the grade, it's not flat?
No.
And so where is it high here? Why is this better?
The road is high.
The road is high.
We just spent $24,000 to grade it so that it would come out flat as opposed to on it.
Come out flat where? Here?
On both sides.
If you just spent $24,000 to grade it with two curb cuts, right?
Right.
Could not be done with one.
What?
What you're saying is that it should have had just one curb cut, but in this case...
If you could get in here, then you can get out here, right? Or...
No, the other way.
Yes or no? I mean...
Sorry. I also just want to point out that that was part of the original foundation of the house, so we didn't alter those at all. Sorry, Mr. Katz.
What was part of the original foundation of the house?
The driveway with both of those curb cuts. So those are, those were already in place for the foundation of the house. Both of them are usable, so we made no changes there.
We removed all of this. This drawing's inaccurate. So you, we did an accurate survey.
We cleared out the space.
Yeah, no, it is accurate, sorry. We cleared out the space, just to make sure that it was easily...
There's an extra two lengths there.
You have to have, unless I'm mistaken, Tom can speak to this, I'm not the expert on this, but I think you need to have a current, if I'm mistaken.
To have what?
Survey, a current survey. If you're saying that these two surveys don't represent what is actually out there, then I don't know how we're supposed to know what's going on.
That is accurate, because they...
It just doesn't look right.
They just took out...
When was that survey done? I thought there was a date on there, it was pretty recent.
This one's 2014.
2014.
There's no date on this one. This one's 14.
2014.
And the driveway improvements were done before this survey was done or after?
There were not, all we did was pave. Nothing else was changed.
I thought you said you regraded. Somebody said you regraded.
Yes, I did.
So you regraded.
So that it was higher.
So it's more than just paving, it's regrading. And in order to regrade, did you regrade with, have to regrade within the town road right-of-way in order to make all that work? I imagine you did.
Yes.
Was there, is there a permit required for that?
I couldn't find one in the file.
It was.
None was filed.
It was filed?
Yes.
None was filed.
None was filed.
None was filed.
So we need to bring that into compliance too, it seems to me. And again, I think it would be helpful to have an ASB build with the elevations as well, because we're looking at this flat thing, and we're hearing different things in terms of how this looks and works.
Yeah, the working part of it is important, because if there's something that changes the sightlines, then that would be nice to know whether it's a problem or not, and so we need the sightlines, and so it may be that you need both exits, it may be you don't. From what I see right now, I can't tell.
There are bushes and trees in the way for the sight.
Well, but you said you regraded it to make it flat, so that wasn't...
So you have better sightlines.
Okay, so you have better sightlines now, so that's what has to be demonstrated. And if you worked in the, that's Route 134, what is that route?
It's 134.
134.
134?
Right near Alparis.
But it was originally okay, so we just improved it.
It's tricky right through there.
Well, it's okay if you improve what's on your property, not if you improve the road.
We didn't touch the road.
We didn't touch the road.
misunderstood what you said.
Yeah, sorry, to be very clear.
No, no, none at all.
Well, I don't...
So just to, just what was there, which is... If I may, if I may, that picture right there demonstrates that there is driveway and a pathway that is not within your property. So, if this is not an accurate drawing, we need to understand what is accurate. If you look at, I don't...
It's your right, the same way, by the way.
That's the way it was.
Same way.
We didn't touch that part.
Would you put up this exhibit, the 2014 survey? Because I'm looking at driveway which is in the town right-of-way, if the survey's correct. I'm looking at your driveway.
Is it state?
Okay, so there is area within the state right-of-way. The question is, exactly.
I'm sorry, Sabrina, that is the line of the state property.
Yes.
Is that the line of state property?
No.
No, this is, this is the line of the state road.
Correct.
The mecanum. And this is state property in here.
Yes.
And in order to do the regrading and do, I'm guessing that you had to work right to the edge of the mecanum, you did not do anything here. So, there, I think there's enough, I don't know, confusion, at least on my part.
No, the regrading was done a little lower down, because it was a very steep driveway, but it wasn't on the actual egress.
So you didn't do any improvements, just what you were saying?
No. No, it's, I'm using the wrong word.
Yes, correct.
We just corrected.
It was not a regrading, that's a curve.
So I think what is needed here, you're looking to create an accessory apartment, which means introducing another vehicle on the property, okay? The planning board has asked...
No, the same number of...
Should be clear, yeah, the same number of bedrooms, same...
Bedroom, same number of vehicles.
Okay, again, you're asking for a separate entity to be on the property. Okay, again, you're asking for a separate entity to be on the property. In order to do the...
But one less bedroom on the upstairs, one less...
It's a little...
We're not talking about quantity here, we're talking about functionality. You're asking the planning board to approve an accessory apartment. They, part of their jurisdiction is approving whether or not the site can be accessed and egressed safely, okay? You have stated you've done some work, it's very steep, that you need both points of access that are currently shown on your plans and have historically been there. The board needs information to understand that, because in many instances, one of their charges is to try and reduce what we call impervious surface on properties for stormwater, for the health of the environment. If you need this space, you have to demonstrate to them that it is needed for proper egress and access into your property. That is what they need, that information.
The space wasn't changed. It's also important to know that traditionally, you can only have one curb cut, so you guys have two, so we have to also...
Always they are.
Yeah, I understand that.
I understand that. So can I just make a suggestion here, because it's a good thing this is preliminary, because you guys are just learning about how this stuff works here. And I think that there are some things that I, that you may need to, I know there's some things you need to do, and the reasons to do them, staff can help you sort that out, and specifically what they are, staff can help you sort that out, and then be better prepared to come back and give us the information that we need. We're not trying to get in your way, it's just that we're not, we wouldn't be responsible if we acted on, based on what we have in front of us. So if you have any specific questions that we can help you with now, that, I think that'd be great, but I also think that your next step is to sit down with staff and really get a good understanding of what you need to do, because I don't think you have that yet.
Based on what I've just heard as an architect, we need to have a survey immediately, just remap it. Remap it and then also walk through with the inspector.
Well, before you, talk to staff and talk to, talk to the building inspector to see if you...
We need to have a survey.
You made elevations.
Right, which is a survey.
Topograph survey.
Topographics.
Yeah, right.
To accurately portray what we have out there, and then, of course, what we can do is also go out there either as a group or individually, to a site visit to get our bearings in terms of how this works, and, and then move on. But I think Tom's point is very good, and that is, what we have right now is really customarily, we wouldn't entertain this now as an informal, so we really need to get you guys to sit down and look at the memos that Sabrina's issued, that Bob has issued, deal with, work with Tom. What we need on this is not that, as Tom said, we're not going to be obstructionist, but we need to bring these things within compliance. We have to understand what has to be brought within compliance, and, and identify it before we can take action.
And also what can remain is grandfathered.
Right.
Just understand on the survey part, is there a reason that the two thousand fourteen one, was that considered that that was no good? Because we haven't actually changed anything.
That meets and bounds, but it's not three, it doesn't have contours on it, which we need to understand.
This should be, this should be a partial survey, official survey that shows the contours, that everybody can understand.
Sure, thank you.
Okay. Anything else, anyone else have any questions, issues? Jennifer, anything?
No, I was just wondering, did you want to schedule a public hearing, subject to them submitting the material? Or wait till you receive that material?
Yeah, you have two meetings left, one of which has a lot on it, the sixteenth, the other meeting is the second. I don't know if that provides enough time for the applicant to prepare this information, otherwise we're looking at September.
Right.
And so the, the question is, you know, they do have a lot of work to do, are you okay waiting until September?
Well, we're okay, I don't think the applicant's...
We're not.
We're here, we kind of matter, we'll spend time to it.
Could we have a visit on the site, so, because like I said, this is a...
Well, I think frankly, we should really have your information, so we know what we're looking at, and that should be done sooner than later. We can, we can do a drive-by, we're still going to need the information.
Okay.
And again, we've had a bunch of things that need to be confirmed, a couple of things that are inconsistent with what the building inspector has directed, what has already been done, and then we have issues that, and these are important, the county. I don't know if we really can schedule something before September, frankly, because you have to get the county's imprimatur on the, on the Septeins.
He's gonna pull close on that one. It cannot stay the way it is.
Let me, let me ask the planning board an alternative, go ahead, Bob.
Just, just for clarification, are you looking for grades along the driveway to see if it's too steep as far as...
We don't know what we're looking for for sure yet.
I mean, if you're gonna ask for a topo, you might as well have them do a profile if you want to see it, and see how steep it is. I know sometimes we've done that in the past, where if it's too steep and it's coming in with an accessory apartment, increased use or new use, we always maybe possibly take your discretion to possibly have a maybe regrade the driveway to make it a little less steep, depending how steep it is. That's your call, that's your call. I defer you on that.
Well, I thought, excuse me.
Go ahead, sure.
Normally, that would make real good sense, but the applicant has asserted that they leveled it out, so I'm willing to take a gamble and say that, you know, once we see the contours, we can see if it's level. And we may not need it, but if, if, if we do need it, then we'll ask for it then, and it'll just slow everything down a little bit more.
Just so they understand, you're just looking for elevations and contours along the driveway itself.
I think our concern is the sightline, is it not?
Yeah, can I make, make another suggestion?
Sightline?
Because we're not, we don't need contours, because they will be doing construction there. What, what I think we're asking for is contours to confirm that the condition is acceptable. I don't need it, for my purposes, I don't need to have a contour survey to understand that. I can go out and take a look, to see if it's safe.
You know, maybe you might want to take a look at it first.
So how about...
And it will not require, therefore not require...
And then you might determine in the field it's acceptable based on the grades.
May I?
Then not require a survey. Take that off of it, because I think the survey is gonna be one of the things that could hold you up, and it's expensive, and I'm not sure that's necessary, unless Tom needs one, and, and then the other thing is the, is the state, right?
I could go out if you like me to, I can go out there, at least confirm to make certain that the sightlines are acceptable.
There we go.
That would be good.
And then they might want to take a very... You might find out when you're there.
We can do drive-bys then individually.
We really don't need it. This is a recommendation.
So if I, if I may, do you want to do, set a site walk, or do individual drive-bys by a certain date?
Yeah.
Yeah, I can go out there tomorrow, it's in my neighborhood.
Yeah, I drive by the house twice a day, every day anyway, so...
So, so then is it, is it, let me ask the applicant, based on the fact that the board is asking for information regarding sightlines and sight distances coming out of the driveway, understanding what it is today, what it has always been, that if you can do even two-foot contours, which you can download offline, online, you know, that you provide the information, updated floor plans, you know, answer all the questions. When is the deadline? Did we pass the deadline for July second?
June tenth.
Sabrina, can I tell them? I might put those contours?
Oh, yeah.
And Bob, what, how long, what's the deal with the county on the Board of Health? How quickly can that be turned around and, and...
Well, you can, you can act on this subject to the county.
Subject to, but I still not gonna get them where they want to be, what I'm hearing, and that is to get them really there and, and operable and rented out. So they have to understand, there are other steps in here, and even if we take action on this, we have conditions, you have to meet those conditions before you can go forward.
I can bring you the plans on Friday, they're very simple. At this point, just, there's only one French door, it's taken out, and there's one door that...
Okay.
That's fine, but you, I think Bob's saying, you have, you have another authority that you need to get approvals from.
That I understand.
That we cannot, we're not responsible for, but I think he's just giving a red flag, that you need to be jumping on that as quickly as possible.
And, and I, I think overall, this is as important as the stuff that we're doing here, because if the county comes back and says, doesn't work, we're doing all this for...
It's the most lead time with that, so to Bob's point, I would get going on that ASAP.
So, it takes, can we, is there any way of expediting it with the county?
I have no clue, it's hit us with that.
That's out of our control, really, pounding our...
Call them up if you want me to call them up and ask them, but...
Yeah, there's some questions you don't want to ask.
I'll get the plans for Friday, and...
What time on Friday? By noon on Friday?
By, yeah. And then, because I have, I have few deadlines. And then they can then deliver the, to the Health Department.
Listen, we're, the town is not concerned about the Health Department. I'm concerned about the board receiving plans and enough time to be able to review them, staff to review them.
Yeah, no, the plans are...
We're already past that July second deadline.
Right. So this is an extension that we're, we're trying to accommodate you folks in, in this situation.
I'm not sure whether we're ready to go here, but it sounds to me like you need something done before we close shop in, in July and don't open up until September, so you're looking for an approved resolution to go forward in July from us. So the question is, would it be possible for us to do a draft resolution with conditions to help them move forward?
I think that would have to be pushed off to July sixteenth.
At this point in time, we cannot.
No, I'm talking about July.
Yeah, sometime in July, I don't think July second.
No, 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 I'm sorry.
But I, I, I would feel more comfortable if they submitted information, so you can discuss on July second. July sixteenth, you have a very heavy agenda.
Yep.
So we'll be looking for stuff for July second?
Submitted by noon on Friday.
Correct, I mean for immediate...
This Friday, second.
Yes.
This Friday?
This Friday.
That's not much time.
This Friday?
No, it's, it's another long night.
This one more Friday?
So, what we can do then is, we can, we can schedule a public hearing for the second, provided we receive the information from you by noon on Friday. And then, again, I would urge you, even when you put this together before you go to sleep while, while doing your overnighter, that you talk with Sabrina, Tom, and Bob, and make sure that we really can, we do this, and we got a good swing of it, and we, we close up any of the loopholes and gaps that we need.
Hang on, let's do the calendar. Do we have a next time? She needs eight days, so if you, is there, is, are there eight?
Oh, for the public hearing.
Yes, are there eight days between Monday and the second? Monday, eight, you'd have to notice from Monday, the twenty-fourth.
Two days this week.
Okay, there's enough time, potentially.
Okay.
If we get the plans on Friday, we cannot get them any later than noon. If you come in at twelve oh one, it will not be possible, okay?
It's out of our hands, right? Because it's like, well, so just be sure, as Bob said, just be sure that you know everything that is on staff's list, and whatever Tom says that ought to be on the drawings for our benefit as well. Everything needs to be on the drawings.
And in the meantime, just so that you understand, you really need to get going with the county.
Your submission, how many copies? We need ten? I don't know, it's a state road, we need twelve. We need twelve copies of your information, and of your, of your new submission, and one electronic copy of that submission, okay? That is what needs to be delivered on Friday by noon.
Do we need to do anything, we, we don't know, do we need to do anything with DOT at this point?
The only thing they would...
No changes being proposed.
If they're doing no work in the right-of-way, absolutely not. But it's at the planning board's discretion to put the sightlines regardless, because of the use.
And what I recommend, what I recommend for the, for the site visit, everything I think that we're looking at is, is on the roadway. I have no, I don't think I have any need to actually get on your property, so I can just drive by and look at it. I don't think it's necessary to schedule a meeting, because that would just...
I think it'll slow it up by us trying to find a date and a time.
And there's nothing on the site for us to see, right?
Yeah, basically.
Our only question is really the street to the, down the hill of the driveway.
And, and taking a look at these two cuts that we have.
As long as you're okay if you see us parked on side road and somebody walking in your driveway, one of us.
That's no problem, we're happy to meet you guys too. Lock up the dogs, okay? Let's see, Tom, can I ask you? It looks like the, the deck of the house is, on one of these surveys, it looks like it's actually over the property line, another one looks like it's touching it. Is the deck grandfathered in also?
It was cor... The deck was cut back to be conforming.
Okay, when?
With the renovation of the house, when they tore it down and rebuilt.
Okay, so it's in form is now?
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you.
So again, that would be something that we would want to see updated on the survey, because it looks like what we have in front of us, yeah. So it's gotta be done.
That's the old one, we have the better one.
Okay, better and newer, more importantly, accurate.
I'll have all the Friday package.
Define better.
Get this here and let you ask for it.
Here it is. Oh, this is a newer version? This is the one that was submitted with the...
Yeah, but the deck still is, looks like it's crossing the property line, or touching anyway.
Looks like it's all...
Zero, 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 zero.
Isn't there a setback in this, for deck?
The variance was granted.
Okay.
Four zero feet?
Yeah, I guess so.
Zero?
Zero feet it was granted. There was a house before, that's why.
Town records indicate that in October twenty fifteen, the Newcastle zoning board of appeals granted two front yard and two side yard variances for a first and second floor addition and alterations to repair and expand the existing deck.
What date was that?
Uh, October twenty fifteen.
Twenty fifteen.
Twenty fifteen.
But we, but we don't know whether or not that was really literally zero feet, though. We know that there was a side yard variance.
Your merge don't come with numbers.
I believe, I believe, I may have pulled those resolutions, I can verify that for the board.
We should verify that, it's most unusual, I'm not saying it's impossible, but why?
It's right on line.
Yeah, right on the line.
Or more.
And not only that, you have some length of property of, of deck that goes along the property line for a while, too. I mean, what is it, a foot or two feet at the, at the angle? Very unusual, but not impossible.
Plausible.
Might even be there.
The neighbor had granted that in nineteen thirty, the same people.
Okay.
Strange but true.
What's more interesting, we've done it this century, not the last one.
Okay, but we can have that accurately, if we could just see what, what that variance might have been, just to confirm.
I will pull it for the board for the next, for the public hearing.
In your spare time.
I'm sure I pulled it when I did my review, which is why it's in there, so I have it.
Okay.
All right.
It's in the file somewhere.
All right, so we will trust, seeing, is there a motion to schedule a public hearing for July second, subject to the receipt of the documents by noon time on this Friday? Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Bye.
So we'll see you soon. Thank you very much.
Thank you so much.
Okay, very good. We have a referral from the town board on a revision to the fence law. Well, my observation on the fence law is that it refers to a line, and yet it refers to a point. I recall in geometry, you needed two points for a line, so I don't get it.
I'm also confused with the existing grade and the proposed grade.
If it's a big enough dot, it becomes a circle, if it's a line, no it's not.
No, a circle's a circle. A tangent is a line to the circle. You can't, it's geometrically impossible to have a, a line parallel to anything but another line.
I have a question about how the definition would be applied. What is the, what is the maximum height of a fence allowed in, in the code?
Six feet at the property line.
Tom, can you comment to the...
So, so assuming for a moment, I'll just make that hypothetical, maybe so.
You can listen, this is extra credit.
So, the height of a retaining wall or a berm would be counted as part of the height of the fence? Is that how I'm, am I reading that correctly?
That would be incorrect.
Okay.
A wall is not a retaining wall unless it's been designed to do that. A freestanding wall can be considered a fence.
Okay, so, but wait a minute, it says, "In the case of a fence located on a wall, berm, retaining wall, or similar structure, the height of the fence shall include the height of the wall, berm, or retaining wall." So, working from that line for a minute, let's say you have a retaining wall that's six feet high, and you need a four-foot fence on that to make it safe, have you then exceeded the limit of a fence in the town code? The height, the height limit of a fence?
The town code, as of now, states six feet is the maximum height from grade.
Under this, Sheila, the answer would be yes, you would have a ten-foot fence under the proposed.
Okay, so I'm, I'm just having trouble putting together a maximum fence height of six feet with some hypothetical conditions that could arise in the field, when you have a retaining wall and need a fence on top of a retaining wall or on top of a berm for safety.
Which we see.
Right, so how would that work, if this is the new definition?
I find the new definition just, it's, you know, to me, a fence you can see through, unless it's blocked off, I guess you still have a place for, you know, rabbits and everybody else to go under, yeah. But it's still, that looks like, that becomes a wall in my mind. You know, not a fence, so it's, I'm confused with this.
Excuse me, the current code allows freestanding walls and fences to be six foot at the property line or within the setback dimensions. There is no clear definition as to the height of a fence when you start going down a slope to where it becomes a problem and you buy squared fence sections. The intent of the new change was to give definition to the height of the fence as you were descending or ascending a slope. The answer to your question on retaining wall, any wall over thirty inches in height requires a guard to either be thirty-six in residential or forty-two in commercial. So if there's a retaining wall that's been constructed over thirty inches in height, it does require a protection device.
So that protection device, plus the retaining wall of the berm, would equal the height of the new definition of a, of a fence?
That is not correct, it could be, exceed that.
Oh, so... It exceeded, but it...
The cumulative height of the wall and the fence on top of it can exceed the six feet?
If you were doing a freestanding wall, argumentally say it's three feet tall, you could put a three-foot fence section on top of that.
And no more.
And no more.
What about a retaining wall, same thing?
A retaining wall implies the grade is at the top of the wall, so at that point, you could go up six feet.
The grade is the top of the wall on one side, what about the impact of the height of fence on the other? I know you didn't write this legislation, but...
But it could be twelve feet on the low side.
It could be unlimited on the other side depending on the retaining wall height.
I think that needs to be clarified.
I think it should be clarified.
Because all you really.
So this is, this is a referral. We would need to produce a memorandum from your board to the town board on this referral.
Right.
So in the case of a retaining wall, and you know, at the top of the retaining wall, the grade is here. At the bottom, it's down here.
This is good. I like this one.
Sometimes I wish I had a whiteboard. I love whiteboards.
You go, girl.
And Jennifer demonstrated using her hands.
Look at this lawyer doing this.
So the height then, Tom, you would intend to have the height measured from this grade up, not from the grade down here.
Yeah, that is correct.
Yeah, okay. That's not clarified here.
And, and should it be clarified? Is, is that what we would recommend? I mean, if you have a retaining wall or any wall which is 30, 30 inches or higher, needs to have a fence on top of it just for safety and security.
If it's a free, excuse me, if it's a freestanding stone wall or wall, no, you don't need a fence on it.
Retaining wall would need to have, if it's over 30 inches high.
Correct.
On the low side, would need to have a, a security fence of what height minimum?
36, right, Tom?
36 for residential, 42 for commercial.
So the question would be, why wouldn't that apply instead of being allowed to go six feet on top of that? I mean, it's, it's not for you to answer, but those are.
Our current fence requirement allows for a six-foot high fence for, you know, buffering. Most residents are looking to get the maximum height they can.
Right.
So that's saying it's stopping at 42 for commercial. They may want additional height for buffering of sight views.
But on the, you're buffering on the, you're buffering on, from, you're buffering on the downside, not the upside, aren't you? I mean.
It depends on the geography of the property. We have a lot of situations where we have retaining walls that are adjacent to driveways and then they put a six-foot high fence on top of that. The downward neighbor sees, you know, anything that could be nine, 10 feet tall depending on locations.
I don't, okay.
Well, how would this apply, for example, in a, in a, in a real life case such as Chapel Hill Crossing where we're building these walls? And we're gonna have to put some sort of safety devices on those. How do we measure that under this, this law?
A safety device needs to be minimum 36 for residential, 42.
Would that be residential even though it's a condo association or would that be commercial?
No, it's an MFPD, multifamily.
So it would be 36, not 42.
36, safety rail on top of the wall. Not a fence, it's a safety rail.
Right, right, okay, right.
But.
That needs to be defined too.
However, they could go up to six feet if they so chose on that, top of that retaining wall.
If they classify it as a fence, yes, they could go up to six feet.
So retaining wall has a minimum protected height of 36 or 42, depending on what application.
30 inches or higher, the retaining wall.
36 or 42 on the height of the protective rail. And if they want, they could go six feet and put a fence on top of that.
If they call it a fence.
If they call it a fence.
Correct.
But either way, if they're breaking the 30-inch change, they need some protection, guardrail or fence.
Correct. Now, if that retaining wall is within the setbacks, there's condosills that they can go to eight feet.
If it's within the setback, they can go higher on their fence.
Right.
Okay. That's because they're stepping back from the property.
Where is all of that spelled out? I mean, your grasp of it is fantastic and very helpful to it.
It's spelled out in our zoning codes 60, 420, under walls and fences.
Tom, this, this, does this trouble you or I, I really literally didn't follow it? "The top of the fence shall be a line parallel to the top of the highest point of such decorative element." Parallel with what? The ground could change. So how we, what is that parallel line? I'm not, I'm.
If the grade is sloped.
Right.
The top of the fence implies will be sloped.
Oh, so it has to follow the grade?
Correct.
Ah, okay.
The rails on the fence will kind of go along.
I think that should be defined by that. Okay. Yeah, this is, it says a point literally. It's, it doesn't work. Okay, I got it.
It's almost as though you need a couple of diagrams in there to, which is not uncommon in codes.
That would be wonderful.
Explain it.
I mean.
For my demonstrations.
How about, how about we summarize your comments so we can prepare a memorandum? Okay, so.
I have an easy one. Start from scratch.
Diagrams.
Diagrams are excellent. Good suggestion.
Yeah, showing various examples.
Yeah, I think that would be really helpful.
Might help us understand it so our comments would be more helpful.
And the, and the paragraph that exists should either refer to other segments. God bless you. God bless us.
I'm good. Thank you, Sheila. There's, there's nothing in there.
Okay. So diagrams.
All right, diagrams, um, to show various examples. Existing paragraph needs, paragraph needs references to the code sections.
And just, I, I, I still don't understand the, the.
More clarification is needed.
Horizontal.
Definition of words.
Regarding the horizontal.
I know it's sort of the horizontals, uh, uh, the relationship of parallel, parallel line horizontal to a point. And if it's, if it references maybe two high points on the fence, then that makes a line and that's the, that's. But I, it's, it's, it's just not.
Have you seen it, Tom? Have you seen a, a draft elsewhere that's, that you've seen that you like better or makes more sense?
I have not researched that, but I can. And I do agree with you, Tom, that it, it should reference parallel to the grade and not a point, because the point is a single entity.
Possible, right?
Yeah.
Good, good catch.
And that's where the sketch would help as well.
Yes, yes.
No doubt.
Absolutely. Okay.
And, and then this idea of, of a fence on top of a retaining wall or a berm and still staying within the six-foot height limit of a fence.
Well, if it's. Because you measure from the high side.
Because you're, because you're measuring, you have to measure in the wall and, or the retaining wall or the berm as part of your, or your height.
Or the rail that's on top of the retaining wall.
Or rail.
They should have a section that show where you measure from so you can see where you measure from.
Yes.
The top's pointed with another sketch.
I think that makes sense.
You're doing some sketches next week.
Hopefully make your life a little easier out there.
Yeah.
Nobody's paying me.
Guys, great. You're like engineers with all this stuff.
Stomping hits there. We can put it in writing and it gets to where it needs to go.
Section and elevations, that's a sketch.
Section and elevation sketches should be included for all detailing.
But if there's a, a model on this somewhere that we like or think we like, that would be helpful.
From all the towns.
All the towns. Have you seen anything that makes, maybe with two points in it?
Okay.
So we'll prepare a referral memo for you in the next couple of days. Can we have it approved by the chairman to then forward to the town board?
I think it would be helpful if we pass it in front of Tom's will.
Of course. Okay.
Great, okay.
In fact, you might want to start with Tom.
Tom, you get all that.
And then send it to you.
I'm used to the insults. It's okay. Do we have a motion there?
Staff, when I say staff, I mean staff.
Okay.
What is it? What is world like here?
So is there a motion to draw, set up this draft and having the staff draw up the draft memo?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Thank you, Tom.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Tom.
Okay, now we go to the action packed area. Minutes, December 14, 2018. Anyone have any changes?
Couple of changes on page two, lines 48 and 49. We're concerned about the, I wanted to insert the lack of internal, the lack of internal wayfinding, wayfinding signs for motorists and then insert from the west entrance to Whole Foods.
Right, yep. Yep.
West entrance, what?
From the west entrance to Whole Foods. So the line would read, Ms. Crespi expressed concern about the lack of way, of internal wayfinding signs for motorists from the west entrance to Whole Foods. Because I ended up at the auditorium more than once.
Okay.
How's it coming along?
Any sales? Okay, anyone else? If not, with that amendment, is there a motion to approve the minutes of December 14?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
We have January 15. Tom recreated history here.
I did.
I like all the red.
We got clarification from Janice what the red meant, so I'm all set. And everything's okay, right? Jennifer, you were okay with it, right?
Yeah, I had no problem.
I couldn't remember what my requiring was, so, but Tom responded to it.
Okay. With the amendments, any changes? If not, as amended, is there a motion to accept the December 15 minutes?
Some moved as amended.
Second?
They're not amended because we gave you a new draft.
Well, does that count as amendments for these lineups?
That was for your information.
It's still a draft.
Okay.
It's draft right now, so you're approving as reflected tonight.
So it's not as amended, it's.
So unamend that amendment.
To, a motion to approve the minutes.
Okay, second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, we move now to the minutes of March 5. Any questions, comments, changes? No, if not, is there a motion to adopt the minutes of March 5?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Agreed? I shouldn't say aye, is it agreed? Whatever. Uh, March 19, we have the minutes of March 19.
I had no comments.
I have a question. That is, did we ever get the roadway ownership issue resolved from the applicant from, I can't pronounce the name, the 126 Medical Avenue? Did everything stop because we couldn't figure out?
It's not town, I believe. He gave me some paperwork that I actually have to work with legal to.
That's just a question.
It's on my desk. On my desk.
Any questions, answers on?
Came across it today. Said, oh, I need to do something with that.
Okay, if not, is there a motion to adopt the minutes of March 19?
Motion?
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
And finally, we have the minutes of May 7. I have one change, actually. It was on page four, line 57. And that is to contact the town environmental coordinator in an effort to make that determination.
Do we have one?
Determination? I don't know.
Yes, we do.
We do? We haven't seen it, but it'll be forthcoming.
See, you're still gonna see Steve for a while.
Oh, great. All right.
He's gonna retain the, the ongoing planning board projects at least until Dennis Corelli, the gentleman who has been hired to replace him, becomes a little bit more comfortable with the town's codes and processes.
Has that's with us yet?
Dennis started on Monday.
Excellent. Where, where does he come from?
Uh, private sector. He was working for T-Town, like reservation and doing some private consulting. He had a 30-year career with.
Malcolm Pernie?
Malcolm Pernie.
That's what I thought.
Okay.
He knows of you, yes.
I've met in a few people that he's worked with.
That's not gonna be helpful.
Yeah.
He can give you all hints on how to deal with me.
We found it impossible.
He said he actually resided pretty close to your office at one point in his career.
Okay.
All right.
As amended.
As amended. Anyone else have thoughts for amendments? If not, as amended, is there a motion to adopt the minutes of May 7?
So moved.
Second? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And is there a motion to close the meeting?
So moved.
Oh, boy.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.